Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 17th Troy City Council meeting. We're pleased this evening to have with us Talithia Pennington from the Community of Christ Troy Oaks to give us our invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Our Heavenly Parent, we come before you tonight with a sense of gratitude that we live in a place where views can be expressed openly, where freedoms exist, that we can walk streets safely, that we can come together and share in open discussion those things that are on our hearts and our minds. And we pray now that as this body comes together to deliberate in this public forum, that minds will be open, that hearts will be open, that ears will be open, that together, as the conversation continues, that the will of the people will be heard, the decisions will be wise, and that we can rejoice together in the blessings that you have given to all of us. In this we pray, in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Nice of you to be with us. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Howrillak?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
While I'm present, we begin this evening with some recognitions and special presentations. And, Mrs. Stewart, do you want me to begin with you, or in the order that's here? Okay. We're going to change the order a bit here. The first is the City of Troy Employee Casual for a Cause presentation for July and August 2011, and Cindy Stewart will present the check to Mary Ellen Kearney with the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation. Good evening, welcome.
As everyone knows by now, we wear jeans on Fridays, and we collect money, and for July and August, we chose the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, and Mary Ellen's here to receive $600.05. Do you want to tell everybody a little bit about cystic fibrosis?
Well, first of all, on behalf of the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, and our patients and their families, I thank the City of Troy for being so generous and choosing us for those two months so that we can benefit from this. Cystic fibrosis is a genetic disorder. It affects the lungs and digestive system of those with it. The median lifespan for a person with CF is currently 37 years, and you, with this check, are helping us add two morrows to every single one of those lives, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next will be the presentation for the Troy Community Coalition 20th Anniversary, and appointment of Nancy Morrison as Executive Director. So Nancy, if you start up, I'll go down around this way for council, we'll meet at the podium. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
As I said, this is a proclamation for the Troy Community Coalition's 20th Anniversary, and the appointment of Nancy Morrison as the Executive Director. Whereas the Troy Community Coalition for the Prevention of Drug and Alcohol Abuse was created in 1991 as a nonprofit organization dedicated to improving the quality of life for all who live or work in Troy by promoting a lifestyle free from the abuse of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. And whereas, since the inception 20 years ago, the Troy Community Coalition has developed and implemented prevention strategies based on our community's needs, influencing and promoting community norms to those supporting a lifestyle free from the abuse of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs through environmental strategies affecting the total population. And whereas Troy is a community that establishes and supports policies and practices that promote substance abuse prevention programs, such as Troy Community Coalition's Operation Medicine Cabinet, Parents Who Host Lose the Most, and Project Sticker Shock. And whereas Troy is a community which recognizes that substance abuse prevention efforts are the most successful when understood and initiated across all communities, and where a comprehensive system monitors indicators of community attitudes, conditions, and alcohol, tobacco, and other drug patterns. And whereas Troy is a community where a variety of alcohol, tobacco, and other drug-free activities are available to all, such as the Celebrity Night Dinner, which by the way is coming up --
Yes, it is, October 27.
October 27. And the Interfaith Prayer Breakfast, which occurs in May, Rochester Villas Summer Camp, Spring Break Troy Style, and the Youth Rock and Bowl. And whereas Troy is a community where training is provided to develop the skills necessary to prevent the abuse of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, such as Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens, Tar Wars, Teens Taking Action, Training for Intervention Procedures, Choose Wisely, and Teens Against Tobacco Use. And whereas the Troy Community Coalition recently appointed Nancy Morrison, M.A.L.L.P.C.P.S., as the new Executive Director to carry on its mission and goals for the Comprehensive Community Prevention Plan. Nancy aims to carry forward the legacies of past Executive Director Ann Kaminsky and founding Director Mary Ann Solberg. Now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council does hereby congratulate the Troy Community Coalition on their 20th Anniversary and the recent appointment of Executive Director Nancy Morrison, and recognizes the Coalition's positive impact upon our community. And be it further resolved that Troy City Council joins with the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of the Troy Community Coalition on this important 20th Anniversary Milestone, signed by myself and all the members of council. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, thank you so much. I am honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Troy Community Coalition, and I just wanted to remind everybody, our Celebrity Night Dinner is coming up Thursday, October 27. It's going to be held at the San Marino Club in Troy. Tickets are $125, but that is our biggest fundraiser of the year, so that'll -- your support will help us continue with our prevention programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Now, we come to an award that was received by the Troy Police Department Pistol Team. They won the ninth consecutive State Governor's Cup, and it is our pleasure as council, and myself as mayor, to formally recognize them for this team effort, one of their many skills. Now, the team consists of more than two, but, you know, we have schedules to meet, and people are, like, on the road and at various duties, so the team members include, here we have Officer Russell Bragg and Officer Fitzpatrick. Here we lead it to Laura Fitzpatrick, who used to be here. Oh my gosh, what a small world. Craig Fitzpatrick, Sergeant's Robert Wolf, Frank Nastasi, Officers Milton Stansberry, Russell Bragg, as I indicated, Craig Fitzpatrick, as I indicated, Antonio Solsky, Greg Stupskinski, and Peter Mitten are the members of the team. They haven't had to turn over this trophy, you know, for the last nine times, right? They compete in a state match, pitting police departments against each other in the test of pistol shooting accuracy, and for the ninth consecutive year, won first place. The team took home the Governor's Cup with a five-person score of 1,305 out of a possible of 1,500 points. And this score also included 13 direct hits in the center of the X. The match is held at the Gray Pistol Range in Jackson, Michigan, and that was on September 9. And of course, the Troy team competed in the highest classification for competitive-sized departments, which is Class A. They had to contend with a heavy rainfall that made the shooting more difficult, but it didn't stop this team's ability to garner their ninth consecutive title. Now, the reason that it's important is that one of the skills of police officers is to have accuracy if they have to use their weapons. They prefer not to, of course, but they have many talents, many things that the police department does. We are so proud always of our police department, and it's an honor and a privilege to have you here with us this evening. Thank you. Congratulations, on behalf of all of the council and the citizens.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to say that we're very proud of this accomplishment, but it couldn't be done without the support of our administration, the chief, allowing us the time to go and display our skills. Parksmanship is a very important part of law enforcement. You have to have that basic skill, and this is a way that we get to showcase that skill. And we appreciate the opportunity to do so, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. As you may or may not be aware, that accomplishment is one of many of a list of long accomplishments that our police department has achieved over the years, and including the one that we are very proud of, and that is being the safest city in Michigan. And they do that through all of their skills and talents that these people bring, their commitment to this community. Next, we're going to go to our items that we have this evening for public hearing. And the first one is the establishment of an IDD, which is an Industrial Development District for Dialogue Marketing Incorporated at 300 East Big Beaver. And Mr. McCary, our city assessor, will present for staff. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me again. We're here tonight on an industrial development district and a tax abatement for a company called Dialogue Marketing. They qualify for tax abatement under the high-tech provisions of the tax abatement policy. They do quite a bit of customized software for their customers, a very large company, been in business for about 30 years. They intend to add 150 jobs here in Troy at 300 East Big Beaver. It's almost a 50% increase in their current workforce. They have about 330 people working there. They intend to purchase about $2.8 million worth of new equipment, and under all the provisions of the council policy for tax abatement, they would qualify for eight years' worth of abatement. 12 years is the maximum, they would qualify for eight years. You should have a handout on your table. Councilwoman Beltramini was kind enough to point out that I did not have the library millage in the tax calculation, and since the citizens did pass that, that probably should be included there. That's the only difference in anything that you'll see here. And what that means is that their total taxes without the abatement would have been about $110,000, of which $37,000 would be city taxes. With the 50% abatement, the company's tax bill would drop to about $55,000 over the eight years, of which $18,516 would be city taxes. So that's the cost to the city, and that's also the revenue that will be brought in as they purchase this new equipment. As in the past, per state law, you have to establish a district before you can grant any type of tax abatement. So I presented the bulk of the information to you right now so that you can make a decision, because without the district, there can be no abatement. And Mr. Patrick Murphy is here from Dialogue Marketing. Should you have any questions for him? He is not prepared for a presentation, but he can certainly answer any questions, and I will do the same at this point in time.
Are there questions from council before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, then I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here on this item that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return to the council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor, I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the resolution establishing the Industrial Development District for Dialogue Marketing at 300 East Big Beaver. Discussion of the motion.
Mayor?
Councilman Howrillak?
Thank you. It'll come as no surprise to anybody who has been here more than once that I will be voting against this resolution and the one that follows. The reason for that is rather simple, and that's because of my belief that when you raise or lower property taxes for one property owner in a city, since we are a community, you should raise or lower those property taxes for all property owners in that community. And the corollary to that is that competitors to this business operate at a disadvantage because they are not afforded the property tax break that this company will be afforded. And so I would hope that in the future, perhaps, there will be a majority on this city council that will hopefully see that the application of property taxes on an equitable manner is probably a very good policy goal. But in the meantime, I shall vote against this resolution and the one that follows. Thank you.
With the discussion of the motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Again, a number that does stand out is 150 jobs. This may not be a tool that everyone is in favor of, but it is a tool that's going to bring 150 jobs here, will make a difference in our community, a difference to families. I'll be voting yes.
Anyone else? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Howrillak?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. The second public hearing is for the granting of the industrial facilities exemption certificate for Dialogue Marketing at 300 East Big Beaver. And Mr. McCary, do you have anything else to add to this?
I have nothing else to add, Your Honor.
Open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Mr. Reinhardt?
I'd just like to bring attention, when a Chinese woman tried to get one room changed by the Somerset Gazette to do a schoolroom, she had to have all her paperwork in and dotted. Now, you've got people coming up here, have no paperwork done at all. You guys are going to approve tax breaks. Don't you like Chinese people? Do these white men have better rights than foreigners in this city? You made that Chinese woman, I don't think she ever got her thing. But you guys just vote people in? They don't even have the proper paperwork filled out. And this is the type of city council that's sitting inside of Troy. If you're white, you get what you want. If you're not white, you gotta jump through hoops.
Mr. Peters, did you wish to speak on this item? I saw you raised your hand.
Well, this isn't really quite a relative, but my concern is that the, I don't know how big the buildings are going to be in this city, but I would hope that in the future, and I don't know if this, that we put a limit on the size of the buildings in this city, because I don't think bigger is better, to tell you the truth. I don't know if that's germane to hear or not, but that's just my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Anyone else that wishes to speak on this? If not, we'll close the public hearing and return to the council table for a resolution. Then we'll have discussion. Councilwoman McGinnis?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion of the item, I'd like to indicate that the correct paperwork and the information filled out by the company in order to receive the industrial facilities exemption certificate was done and certified and checked. It is not the same situation as the one that was referred to by a member of the citizenry, and so I'd like to correct that for the record. Anyone else that would like to speak on this item? If not, then the vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Howrillak?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we're going to go to public comment, and due to the fact that we have more than 15 that have signed up, by our rules and procedure, which are printed in the agenda, if that should occur, then we suspend the rules and change the time limit from five to three minutes, and after we pass the resolution, we'll ask Mrs. Stewart to adjust the clock from five to three. I move to suspend the rules.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Mayor Protem, that we suspend the rules. Discussion? The vote to suspend, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Howrillak?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moved to change the time limit from five minutes to three minutes per speaker, due to the number of folks that have signed up.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin, that we change the time limit from five minutes to three minutes per speaker. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Howrillak?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Motion passes. Before I call the first people up to speak, I want to remind those, and if you're new to the council, or if you've been before, that this is on agenda items that are on the agenda, or items that are not on the agenda. If you are here on an item that is on the agenda, instead of speaking at the time when we vote on that item, you need to speak during this time slot. And if you have items that are not on the agenda, you're welcome to speak on those too, but the time limit is three minutes. So with that, I'll begin, and because we have so many people, we'll go to our lining up of the first five, and then it moves along quicker. So I'll call the first five in this order. Gordon Shepke, Audrey Zambroski, Richard Peters, Neil Jazenski, and John Reagan. If those people would come up in order, please, and we've adjusted the clock for you, okay? Good evening, Mr. Shepke.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Tonight, I wanted to give Martin a big thank you, and I think I speak for a lot of residents in Troy, taxpayers, for the wonderful job you've done on council, and the great ombudsman that you've been. You've been exceptional. Your parents can be very proud of you for the job that you've done, many times standing alone against unconceivable odds. You've had the moral fiber to stand up, and that's the reason you've been tagged with being the moral compass of the council. Anyway, I'd like to address another issue tonight. Last week, when I brought up about the vandalism of campaign signs, Councilwoman Beltramini said that she agreed with me about this vandalism and removal of legally placed signs, that she said she's never agreed with me on anything else. And I think that's because, number one, she voted for the convention center and IMAX complex, which I was dead against. She's also voted for the ramp over the I-75 at Long Lake, which I was against. She's also voted for the ballpark here on the Civic Center property, which I was against. She also voted for the SACRA, against the SACRA reorganization that saved the city over $750,000. She's also favored the using of SACRA money to build a golf course in Rochester Hills. She's also voted against the taxpayer protection amendment. She's supported that 29% operating millage increase. She voted against the seven-day library operation to keep it from being open on Saturday, and she voted for the transit center. And we don't even have money appropriated, from my understanding, to maintain and staff it. These are the reasons she hasn't agreed with me, and I again want to thank Martin for having his internal fortitude to stand up and stand for what's right for the taxpayers, and again, kudos. Thank you.
Next, we're going to hear from Audrey Zambroski. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm not here to thank anybody right now, but everybody knows who I feel thankful for. And, but I got a phone call from a woman. I don't know who she is, I never met her, but my daughter works at Michael's in the frame department, and the lady came in to get something framed, and she said she has to say her name and address and everything, and she says, "Oh, you live in Troy." And she goes, "Yeah," and she says, "So do I." And she says, "Gee," she says, "if you live in Troy," she says, "who do you think you're going to vote for?" And she said, "Well, let me tell you. Let me give you my mother's telephone number, and you call her, because she always has gone to the council meetings, and she's got the better advice to give." So she did. She called me a few hours later, and, because my daughter had called and said, "This lady called?" And I said, "No." Well, after talking with her for a while, she says, "Can you tell me why the community commission has gone up $10 for seniors?" Now, she's handicapped, she walks with two canes, and she says, "I have to pay $10, now I have to pay 20, then it's gone up to 30." But the biggest thing is that going into the bathroom, there are nothing to put on the toilet seat, she says. And she says, "Why do they always build the handicap further away from all the other toilets? It's always the last one to get to." She says, "And if they think putting the air thing on to dry your hands," one friend of hers fell, and she hurt her hip, broke her hip. Well, she had to have replacement. She says, "Now she goes into the community center, and the water, the people shake their hands like this, the water's on the floor, and after she got well over it, went for therapy, everything, she slipped in the community center." And she says, "Why do they put those things there? Why don't they have paper towels that people can use?" So I'm just relaying a message, whether there was a lawsuit on this, whether it happened or not, I'm just relaying a message which somebody says, "Are they trying to keep us seniors out of the community center?" So I just pass on that message.
Next, we're going to hear from Mr. Peters. Mr. Peters? Good evening again. Adjust the mic there for you. There you go.
Good evening, council, folks of Troy, fellow Americans, I suppose. I want, first, to the mayor and the council who are retiring, you've had a tough, arduous task here in the past few years, largely because of the Republican economics, and you've been a good captain of the ships, and you've steered our government --
our government, I think wisely, and probably been one of our best mayors, okay? Also, I want to put my plug in for Mrs. Beltramini. I hope that she gets elected. I like Ms. Daniels personally, but I don't like her extreme politics. I think that to banish the many at the expense of the few, I don't think has ever worked, really, to be honest about it, when they want to gut it. So that's basically, and I would hope that the people get out to vote, get off the couch, get off the stool, get off the toilet, whatever you're at, to get out and vote, and hope their democracy will work. About the state, I would hope that it do more for Detroit, including assistance on lights, more police protection, and maybe they could put that Ambassador Bridge in, or, I mean, not the Ambassador Bridge, but I mean that new bridge, where we could have maybe a bullet train running up to Troy via Detroit. I'd like to see a jobs and energy bill, the Congress pass something down there, Dr. Duff, and do something. And finally, I hope the post office would convert its vehicles, maybe with alternative energy, and possibly saving a billion dollars, or a third of what they cost, and maybe some solar, or what have you on them. Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to hear from Neil Jazansky. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, and city employees. I just wanted to come up today and briefly recognize the work of the Troy Community Coalition. I think they, you know, it's excellent seeing these folks here. I really support their mission, preventing the abuse of alcohol and tobacco and other drugs, and it's really encouraging to see that despite the city funding that was cut, that I'm sure no one did with any amount of joy, that they're still met, you know, keeping on with their mission. And, you know, I look forward to the day, maybe when city revenues recover a little bit, that maybe we can restore some of the funding that they have been lost. I think that they are doing their best to support the quality of life, and I believe that this should be something that the council supports as well. So I want to just thank Ms. Morrison and all the other members and volunteers and supporters of the organization. I'm going to be there on the 27th. It sounds like a lot of fun, so I encourage everyone to come out as well. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Reagan, John Reagan. Before you start speaking, we won't start the clock yet. I'm going to call the next five people behind you. Dave Henderson, Jim Awurprasinski, Janice Daniels, Dale Marish, and Marvin Reinhardt. If those folks would come up in that order, please. Yes, Mr. Reagan?
Good evening, council and staff. My name is John Reagan, president of the Troy Nature Society. I'm here this evening to give you a brief summary of what has occurred since July 1st, when we took over operational control of the Stage Nature Center. This summer, we had three week-long programs, and had 268 students come in. We had two short programs, and had 24 students come in. We had an agreement with the city, and sponsored by a grant from the Kelly Foundation, and we had Title I students that were here on summer school, come up to the nature center for the first time. And there were 10 sessions, and we had 141 students come through. The grant allowed us to bring, or to have a bus, pick the kids up at either Waddles or Morris School, bring them to the nature center, a class specifically for them, put them back on a bus, and take them home. It was such a success, the school has asked us to do this again next summer. It was a proud moment in our history, and we're happy that we could do it, and we've received a number of thank yous from the students, as well as the teachers and that. As far as stewardship goes, we've teamed up with REI late in August, and did an invasive plant species removal. We made a big dent in those little species that are there, or were there. Looking forward to working with them again next year. The city, or the board agreed a month ago to open up the nature center on Saturday through the months of September and October. We started off the first weekend with 14 people. The numbers have grown substantially since then, and two weeks ago, we were open on Saturday and Sunday, and had 178 people walk through the door. With very little advertisement, we're doing a great job in keeping the building open. Got a few new members, which is always good, but a lot of congratulations on what we're doing. To support all of this, we require a substantial commitment from our volunteers. Through the summer, we've had 123 volunteers put in 427 hours to support the operation of the nature center. The board agreed to have an audit of the financial statement for the last fiscal year. Well, we didn't do so well, because there weren't any comments. The, we're given a clean audit with no management comments at all, and this will use to go after bigger grants in the future. But it's important that we had to go through this audit. A copy of the audit is with Jeff Bigler.
Thank you. Thank you for a great job. Mr. Henderson is next, Dave Henderson. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. This has been an interesting two years, to say the least, and I just want to, on the way out, for some of you folks, I just want you to know that even though we have differing opinions on how to fix things, and what we need to do next as a city, we do respect the fact that you've taken the time, in essentially unpaid position, to come and do what you have to do. Martin, again, I appreciate your time. As Mr. Shepke mentioned earlier, you have stood against some enormous odds, and done what, at least I feel, is right. So again, we do appreciate the time and the efforts that you put into it, and we're all neighbors and friends. Thanks.
Next, we're going to hear from Jim, Jim Awurprasinski. Good evening. Nice to see you. I haven't seen you in a while.
Good evening. Oh, yeah, it's been a couple of years or so.
Thank you for coming.
I came here to thank you all for your service to the city, both those of you that will still be here, as well as the three or four of you that will be leaving. Probably not surprised that frequently, I don't agree with the majority of this council, but as Mr. Henderson just said, I certainly respect your opinions, and I hopefully respect the opinions of the residents as well. I'm not going to say anything about the upcoming election. I don't think this is necessarily the appropriate place to do it. But the major reason I came really is to pay tribute to Martin Hollerick. James Savage was up here, I think, the last council meeting, and had some glowing words to say about Martin, and as he said, I was watching this on my computer, as Mr. Savage is talking, I'm saying, "Yeah, that's what I say, that's what I say," and stuff, and that's all true. I've known Martin for about seven years now. I started being an avid council watcher back then. I've grown to like his politics, and we've become friends. And he has so much integrity, and such an ethical guy, which is one of the reasons I really like him. He really is a true Eagle Scout. And one of the reasons I'm talking about him now here is, he has taken so much crap up here, and never said a word about it. He gets this from this group of women, who somebody dubbed "The Angry Women," they belong to this trust group or something, and they come up here and say the most vile, disrespectful things to Martin, and I think it's pretty disgusting. Martin has more ethics and more integrity than all of those angry women have put together. So I especially thank Martin for his service, plus he's usually on the right side of my votes, like Mr. Shepke mentioned, the convention center, the ballpark, and everything. I was on the same side as Martin. So again, thank all of you for your service, and thank you especially, Martin.
Good night. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Janice Daniels. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council, management, staff. I'm here this evening to express my gratitude to three different groups that have shown major contributions to this city recently. The first group I want to recommend is, they received some accommodations from Councilman Fleming the other week, and that is the North Woodward Community Foundation, that gave us the Troy Family Days this past summer. They did a wonderful job. There's a number of companies that sponsored that event that I would like to give recognition to. They include Walsh College, Zion Christian Preschool and Childcare Center, Papa Romano's, Kelly Services, Henry Ford Health Systems, to name just a few. All of the sponsors are shown on the Troy Family Day's website, so I would encourage the community to frequent these businesses as a show of gratitude if we have a business need, so that we can support their efforts and continue to grow Troy and benefit us all. Another wonderful, wonderful set of events that took place, as you know, were the Troy Fire Department Open Houses. I was able to attend all six fire stations, and I found a high level of professionalism. There was a great deal of friendship and fun, and very interesting learning events that were fascinating to people of all ages. I think that our fire department shows what can happen, the good that can happen with community commitment and volunteerism. The third event that I wanted to mention has already been mentioned, and that's the Troy Nature Society. They're having a fundraiser this Thursday, October 20th, and I would encourage everyone to join. I'm going to be there. It's Thursday evening, and they are, actually, they're a nonprofit group that has come in to fill a void that was left when the public funding was eliminated from the Troy Nature Center, and I think that's a wonderful venue for our children and the people in the community, so we should, in fact, endorse that and encourage that greatly. These types of activities are some of the reasons that Troy can and will command attention, not only at the local level, but at the community council, excuse me, at the county level and the state level. And if we continue to seek ways of advancing our community using innovative ideas, with positive, forward-thinking, new leadership, and a commitment to leaner government, we can become a leadership city that will be recognized across the country. That would be my goal for Troy. That's what I want to see happen here in the city of Troy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Dale Marish. Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the chance to speak, and to all the council members and the mayor, thank you for your service to our city. And I have some words I'd like to say. Councilwoman Martin Howellak has served our city with integrity for 12 years, putting the needs of the city and its fiscal stability above his own. Not everyone agreed with his views. He had political opponents, but always conducted himself with gracious professionalism. At times, he was a lonely voice of objection to what the majority of the council wanted to do. Even when unfairly accused, he responded with grace and decorum. Martin, you will be missed. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, before you come up to the mic, but don't start talking yet, I'm going to call the next five people, and then we'll start the clock, okay? Next, we'll hear, will these next five people please line up? James Griggs, James Savage, Mike Scorici, Chile, Linda Kaima, and Ed Abraham. Will those folks line up in that order, behind Mr. Reinhardt? Good evening again, Mr. Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak. The only reason I keep bringing up that Chinese woman thing, because you guys have approved some type of furniture store on Stevenson, they had to get some type of exemption, and he's still advertising for somebody in the store, and you accuse that Chinese woman of wanting to change her zoning to improve her price of her property. That's the reason I keep bringing it up. But other people can just get stuff done, and your person over there said all the paperwork wasn't filled out, so that's the reason I said it. So I don't know if you mentioned it or not. But also, too, Bank America, you saw Bank America was a big thing, and on the internet, there's a lot of people saying they don't like Bank of America, so don't worry. I email them and tell them that Detroit City supports everything Bank of America does, and I sent your speech to them to support how the city of Troy supports them. I've been down in Detroit to those protesters and tell them, "Stay out of Troy, because we don't have any place for them to protest," though the Bank of America is right there by I-75, and we keep them out of the city. And then somebody referred to these groups as Angry Women. I think they're more like ducks. I grew up on a farm, and the ducks start talking, you don't know what they're saying, but they're saying it. And somebody brought up the fact that this discussion of selling the Detroit City Hall never happened. Well, unfortunately, on Troy Times, which they say is a lying magazine, by the way, puts false advertisements in there, which I got over and over again copied. There it is, front page, "City Considering to Selling to City Hall." But this is a lying newspaper, according to Trust, so you can't believe that whatever is put in there. And also, too, most of my complaints is, I asked you before for an honest person. I've asked honest people on the Facebook pages. Nobody stepped up and said they're honest in this city, Mayor. You know that? I know I'm not honest, because I know a crook when I see one, all right? So when somebody says to me, "Well, why do you call that guy that name?" I'm everything, you understand? When General Motors said that nobody was going to do that, I did it. Because I'm a nobody at General Motors. They just told me to do whatever they said to do. And that's how, this is the way this city operates. We've got a pistol team here, number one in the state. Do we got a pistol thing inside this city? No, because they are not allowed to have weapons, the citizens, but the police can have weapons, because this is a police state. Whether you people believe it or not, this is a police state. Because I asked them about it, they said they'd much rather go to Roale Oak and use them, use the target range in Roale Oak, not the cities. And just before I leave here, remember in the court, I was talking about energy efficiency in our buildings, and I pointed to my nephew that's got a bachelor's degree, not a bachelor's master's degree, in energy efficiency, and he would come to this city and check it out for free. But you guys got too much money, so you want to squander it.
Next, we're going to hear from James Griggs. Mr. Griggs, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. It's a great facility we have here. I look around, and you look at the brick and everything, it was built by the men and women years ago, that had integrity, and a lot of common sense, and a lot of good brain power. When they built this facility, this building here, it even included an indoor range, which they still use today. I think Troy was very gifted early on by some tremendous councils and tremendous mayors. And as this council passes by into the future, I think it was regarded as the worst, most divisive council we've ever had, with the exception of Wayne Fleming and Howellak. We've seen the kids deprived of a Troy days, despite the fact that most other communities, it's their major fundraiser. Sterling Heights, City of, St. Lawrence in Utica, St. Anne's in Warren, all have huge festivals with, a three-day festival with all the rides and everything. They simply call up Arnold Amusement Company, and they put it on, and there's no cost to the sponsoring city or church. You just make a lot of money. And we allegedly closed it down because it cost us too much money, when in fact, everybody else used it as their major fundraiser. The council also voted to close the library many times, tax increases, despite the fact that they had campaigned against tax increases. And then we had, to top that all off, we had the hostage vote. If you want the library, you're going to have to vote for this, and maybe even the snowplows. And then when it was passed, amazingly, they found all sorts of money, which Fleming and Howellak had said we had, and then they wanted to increase the snowplows and maybe bring back a few more policemen. It's just very, very sad, this last mayor and council group. I hope that we can heal from that and get away from this divisive blackmail-type politics. And also, the shot that impugned Howellak just before the election, where the mayor wanted to ostracize him or sanction him without enough time for it to go through the media in the talkings, just a few hours before, a day or two before the election. So I'm very sad as this council passes, but it'll be good to see it passed, and hopefully the city can heal, because we have some great people in this community. The library is a great facility, and I hope it stays open. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Mr. James Savage. Next, we'll hear from Mr. James Savage. Good evening, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Mary Ann Bernardi is a longtime resident of Troy and I have a letter from her that she asked me to read out because she didn't think she could make it to the meeting tonight. So, I would like to read this on her behalf and it's to the mayor and council. I would first like to thank Mr. Savage for kindly reading my comments at the October 17th council meeting. This meeting marks the last city council meeting in which Councilman Martin Howelak will preside as a council member at the end of a 12-year tenure. I would like to thank Councilman Howelak for his dedicated and outstanding service. He has never failed to hold true to his convictions, standing up for his values and beliefs regardless of the high price he had to pay for this at times. He is a hero to many of us who reside in Troy as he has often raised his voice for those who could not be heard. He fought to save our park land at the Civic Center, which many residents referred to as this sacred land at the time. He fought to save the wonderful historic treasure White Chapel. He fought against proposals which would by now have become an enormous economic drain on the city. We have been blessed by the unselfish gift of his time, energy, and focus over the span of many years. For all this and more, I join with multitudes in Troy to say thank you and to wish you great success in your future endeavors. On my own behalf, I just have a brief comment and that is I would like to thank the outgoing members of this council, although we probably haven't agreed on everything. I would like to thank you for your time and your commitment to this city. And for Mayor Shilling, I would like to compliment you on your performance as chairperson because you have had some of the most difficult circumstances to deal with and I thought you did a very good job in keeping the decorum of the city intact. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Next, we'll hear from Mike Scartelli.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My comments tonight are regards to the response of the Troy Police Department. With all due respect, obviously, they're very skilled. I have an area of concern related to the front-page article on the Troy Somerset because that recently domestic abuse. I ask you to please try to follow on this one. My first question is, are any of you familiar with a form of child abuse called parental alienation? If not, it's a form of child abuse where the relationship between a parent and child is partially or completely destroyed. I did want to give you a little background on my concern of this related to the police department. I do have some evidence I collected before I went to court to get a guardian for my children. They appointed a guardian, brought in a whole team of doctors, spent months and months intervening on behalf of my children. They were frustrated though over time and I'd like to give you a little insight into how difficult this can become. In the middle of all this, being a Catholic that I am, I went and talked to a priest at St. Anne's in Warren where I was rebuked, to put it mildly, time and time again until I received this. And this is a complaint filed by Father Bondi against me for trespassing on the premises. Problem with this is it's fabricated and he did not explain why he would do something like this. Of course, I addressed this with the Warren Police Department time and time again, harassed every step of the way. I did address it with the, tried to address it with the chief of police, was rerouted to a lieutenant who obstructed my attempts to file a police report. Of course, this whole time, I'm making trips up to the Troy Police Department and asking for help, sent away each time, tried to call the chief, was rerouted to a sergeant in the front desk and told to talk to the Warren Police Department. So, in summary, I think our founding fathers have set up a system to prevent this kind of activity. Our relatives came to this country to prevent this type of activity and I'll ask you to consider what may be able to be done to prevent this type of activity in our city. I thank you for your attention.
Next, we'll hear from Linda Kaima.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I want to talk about the pros and cons, pro-life or con-Troy. We're nearing the election. As can be expected, the gloves are off, but there's magic in the air. Recent mailing by the slate of candidates endorsed by TCU reads your pro-life candidates for Troy City Council. This from a group that complained that their opposition was pulling at the heartstrings of the voters when children appeared before council to help save the library. Now, come on. While many feel this is an admirable trait, what does it have to do with nonpartisan city politics? Also, because they feel this way, does that mean the others don't? Does that mean if you don't vote for them, you're not moral and you lack integrity? I could go into the smoke and mirrors on this mailer about who endorses them, but I'll leave it at that. So, this latest pro-life, well, that's ironic since they're con-Troy. What does that mean? It means they're against maintaining a city and its amenities that are conducive to those looking for the best place in which to raise a family. Con-Troy also means they continuously con the voters of our fine city with their magical mailings. The latest being the voter's guide. That's right, the voter's guide is determined by a member of TCU. They argue they never wanted to close the library, but they were responsible for the three false petitions to try to defeat the real one, that they aren't thinking of outsourcing the police department while their grand leader has been overheard saying that it's the best and most cost-efficient way. To date, they continue to use these shady practices, I'm sorry, magic. They will complain and be accusatory about tactics used nationally, but they'll think nothing of using the same for their own purpose. Remember, it was the likes of this slate that misrepresented the charter amendment in 2008, which tied the hands of council in making economic decisions during hard times. The same charter amendment that they said would not cause our bond rating to be lowered. Look at the dashboard in Moody's rating after that change. Coincidence? They have only one goal in mind, power. Never mind that Troy's a fine city and is struggling like others in these economic times. This is all for their political and egotistical gain. So, residents, don't be fooled with the smoke and mirrors. There's no magical trick in their bag. Look around you. How have other cities addressed these harsh economic times? Isn't it magical that Troy's the only one to be castrated these days for doing what's necessary? The difference in our city is the others don't have a con-Troy group. Please make informed decisions based on facts. Vote for those that will work cohesively with others and mend the divide in this city. Vote for those that can help bring businesses to the city, not to sway them. Vote for those that have been instrumental in building this city and have been a part of all that it has to offer. Vote for those that understand community and will work to build ours, not tear it apart and do further irreparable harm. Vote for Robin Beltrameini, Jim Campbell, Bruce Bloomingdale, and Neil Yashinsky. Votes that will bring this city together, attract business to Troy, and make this city the winning destination for families and business alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Edna, before you start, I'm going to call the next four people. Susan Martin, Alan Hutterick, and Anthony Cruz. If those people would come and line up, please, behind Edna Abraham. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and city staff. I have a question for you and for the citizens of Troy. The question is, who is your neighbor? It's a question that was asked by a wise and compassionate man 2,000 years ago. It's a question that transcends time, space, and faith. So, I ask you, who is your neighbor? Is your neighbor someone who would put a copycat library millage proposal on a ballot or three copycat millage proposals on a ballot for purposes of confusing neighbors? Or someone who would not disavow such actions? Is your neighbor someone who would use fuzzy math to claim that the aforementioned library millage was a 29% tax increase when the reality is that it was maybe $8 a month? Is your neighbor someone who would hijack the name of the Friends of the Troy Public Library just so people would be more likely to sign a petition? Is your neighbor someone who would intentionally misrepresent the wages and benefits of city staff to make residents believe that they had not made any concessions? Or someone that kept claiming that the city manager makes more than the governor? Is your neighbor someone who would claim that the city asked the voters in Troy to approve a library millage five times when the real answer is that the city only asked once? Is your neighbor someone who would push their political beliefs onto a nonpartisan municipal election? An election that's about protecting our city's best assets and ensuring long-term financial stability, not about being pro-life or pro-medical marijuana? Is your neighbor someone who would use their position as a city councilman or county commissioner to send letters to residents that appear to be official but only furthers their political agendas? Is your neighbor someone who would proudly describe herself as the founder of the Troy Tea Party and a true Republican and suddenly becomes independent when running for mayor? Some of you would say no such people live in Troy, that I must be overstating the situation and I really wish that were so. But after following the city politics over the past two years, I'm just tired. And aren't we all tired of the divisive politics? We have a big election coming up in November. Let's vote in the people who are best suited to bridge this gap and move Troy forward. I would ask that residents of Troy vote for Robin Beltrameini for mayor, Bruce Bloomingdale, Jim Campbell, and Neil Yashinsky for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Susan Martin. Good evening.
Good evening. Our culture has taken to wearing a particular color or ribbon in reference to a disease or a syndrome like cancer. But many of us know that merely recognizing a problem with a superficial object does not begin to attack it. What an insidious disease requires is aggressive action. We have had insidious disease in Troy and that problem, like a cancer, cannot be treated superficially. It too requires aggressive action so we can put an end to the destruction that it's caused in our city. I started fighting this disease with the battle to approve a millage for our library and many of us said at the time that was just one symptom of this larger disease. And we began to heal when we won the privilege to keep that library open. And so, we had energy to continue this journey toward a cure in Troy. And believe me, it has taken a toll on me, my family, those I've worked with, much like a disease take a toll. Week after week, we've been insulted for trying to bring truth to a subject. We've been called an angry person as a means to boil something down to make us look like fools when all we've done is tried to share information. We have three more weeks of fight left in us and we're not going to be derailed by this constant onslaught of negativity from this disease that is ravaging Troy. The most important thing we can do to combat it is to fight back aggressively. And how do we do that? We vote for the candidates who stand for honesty, integrity, and commitment to Troy. We have three candidates for council who are supremely qualified for those positions. And we have one who is the only choice we have for mayor if we want full healing to occur. These four individuals have given back to Troy with their leadership and service and they have been positive contributors to our community, our schools, and our businesses. Those candidates are Robin Beltrameini for mayor, Bruce Bloomingdale, Jim Campbell, and Neil Yashinsky for council. If we want to heal Troy, we have to vote for them. You will not find a more committed group of individuals who not only have the desire to heal this city, but who are the only ones to do it with their talent, ability, and honor. Last, I would like to thank Mayor Shilling, Councilman Kerwin, Councilman Beltrameini for your tremendous service and even Mr. Howelak, without whom I probably would not have gotten quite so involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Alan Hutterick. Good evening.
Good evening. While it's a common refrain to thank you all for serving, all of you, but especially those that are leaving. Councilman Howelak, I haven't agreed with the application of your ideology at this council table all the time. Sometimes I have. But believe it or not, you and I have a lot of common beliefs if we take it to a national level. It's more, I don't see it always applying here. I wish you the best as you step away from this and I'm relieved for you that there's an opportunity for you to do something completely new. Seize it. Go for it. Take the experience from here. Go. Do some great things. Councilwoman Kerwin, your service to this community has been exemplary, both on school board and your time here at city council. Thank you for stepping up to this challenge, for telling it like it is, and for your ability to articulate so clearly and concisely how complicated the challenges are. You should be proud of your contributions. Our community has benefited immensely. I am eager to see where you take your many leadership talents and sharp intellect and I'm sad for the city that you are stepping away. Madam Mayor, thank you too for working so hard to keep a smile on your face and serving with dignity and hopefulness. Had there not been such an effective, subversive element to the majority here, you would have positioned Troy to go through these horrible economic times with a lot more grace. For that reason, I truly value the career experience you brought to the table. All those years as a first-grade teacher certainly helped keep all of the childlike behavior here in line. These were difficult meetings, difficult times, and you handled it well. Your love for this city is clear and we appreciate you bringing that passion to this important leadership position. Councilwoman Beltrameini, I refuse to say goodbye. You're the logical choice for mayor. Your experience in so many ways, it will be a valuable asset to the table. You are the bridge builder. Haven't always agreed with you, have often agreed with you. You're probably the right person because you land in that area where you try to bridge ideas. We need that in this community. It's time for the divisiveness to go away. I also support Bruce Bloomingdale, Neil Yashinsky, and Jim Campbell. The three of them bring tremendous experience, one youthful and out of the box, one a grandpa-like guy who, once you get to know his heart, he will serve us so well. And Jim Campbell, if any guy can serve as a chaperone at band camp for eight years, he can certainly handle council. Thank you so much. Good night.
Mr. Cruz, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I don't have any prepared words here, so I'm just speaking freely and from the heart and I'll try to keep my comments brief. First and foremost, I want to thank two key council members who I think have done an incredible job of representing the immortal words of one of our great founding fathers and very prolific writer, Thomas Paine, who a little over 200 years ago said, which is very, pretty commonly known and often misquoted phrase, that the government that governs least governs best. What Thomas Paine is slightly less known for is for also making these two utterances and that is that at best, government should be looked upon as a necessary evil and at worst, government should be looked upon as an intolerable evil. And the two gentlemen I'm referring to are Mr. Wade Fleming and Mr. Martin Howelak. I want to personally thank them for placing politics on the backburner, placing the interests of the voters first in terms of fiscal responsibility, in terms of personal freedom, property freedom. And this, and thank you both very, very much. This leads me to a very interesting and somewhat disturbing article I read in the Troy Times about two weeks ago. And it's about the library millage and it's about, it goes on to make several points about how the millage was barely enough and why the library has to be closed on Saturdays, et cetera. And the tone of this article just strikes me as the continuance of what I've heard since the last election. You know, people like myself who were on the other side of the argument, and none of us were ever against the library, we're just against taxation without representation, money used irresponsibly. And we took our loss with dignity. I have never seen, you've all heard of sore losers, I have never seen such a bunch of sore winners than some of the voices I've heard this evening and some of the articles I hear in the paper. And this particular article, which is about two weeks old in the Troy Times, talks about one of the reasons that we cannot afford to keep the library alive with less money than we have is because we have over 110 computers, 80 of which are used by the public, and these computers cost $3,300 to maintain per machine per year. $3,300 is enough to buy about eight computers complete with monitors and software. Well, something's very, very wrong with the way our money is being husbanded. A more recent article in the latest issue of the Troy Times has several comments regarding the outsourcing of legal services and Ms. the outsourcing of legal services, and Ms. Greg Bloom, you know, makes some interesting remarks in defense of keeping things the way they are. But if you'll pardon the metaphor, that's pretty much equivalent to the fox guarding the hen house. You're not judged only by the cost of your services, but you're judged by the cases and by the causes that you champion and those that you choose to not champion. So the dynamic is a lot more complicated in this newspaper article. But I want to close with, again, my thanks to these two gentlemen, and I thank you all very much for your service.
Thank you. That concludes those that signed up to speak. So we'll go on with council response to council comments. Is there anyone that would like to take a moment to clarify or make a comment about council comment? And then we're going to take a short five-minute break. Anyone?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
I do want to, since the first speaker did kind of attack me, I do want to set the record straight. It's absolutely true. If there's a quality-of-life venue in Troy that will make us a better place to live, I will actively consider it, always have. But the speaker said that I voted against the SACRA reorganization that brought $750,000 back to the city of Troy. That was, in fact, what I did the first time it came up because state law did not provide for the cities that got that rebate to also assume the costs of the liabilities of the transfer stations and the landfills that SACRA was left operating. So I worked with others very hard to get the state law changed so that those costs would be passed along, and then, when that was done, we did all vote to give that money back. And I had nothing to do with the Rochester Hills business. And this council never voted on library hours. That is an operational function of staff. We never voted on that. The I-75 issue was brought up by a state legislator who wanted to bring a project home. It was not a project that this city council or our administration wanted done at that time, but it was when the money came in. And as anybody who has followed road funding in this state knows, if money comes now, it may not come again for 15 or 20 years, particularly on a big project. So I'm not going to go through every point and be reactionary, but when things are spoken and not true, I will react.
Anyone else want to do council comments? Mayor Protim Kerwin?
Well, we know that, again, during public comment, anyone can say anything. And we do have a pattern of some of saying things which are simply not true. And tonight, we had one where a resident talked about ethnicity and a zoning issue. Well, in a matter of fact, in zoning issues, it's just as clear as whether that development can happen on that site. And those years ago, when someone wanted to expand a business and do something on that stretch of Waddles Road, it was out of zoning. With our new zoning ordinance, those are neighborhood nodes, and that neighborhood node would allow that kind of expansion now. It has nothing to do with ethnicity. We are certainly fortunate that during this leadership, we were able to not only look at the master land use plan, but also look at zoning ordinance, which then supports that. So ethnicity has nothing to do with the decisions that are made regarding any of those issues. I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other response to public comment?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
Just a small comment. This is the last meeting before the vote, excuse me, and I hope it's the last one that I attend where people get up and attack a council member that's given so much time to this community. I hope we put an end to this. There are some good candidates out there. Do your homework and find the right candidate so that we have a full, good council up here. Thanks.
Some of you may be expecting council members who are leaving council to make some comments. We will do that at the council comments section at the end of the meeting and now in response to comments. So council will take a five-minute break and return to regular business.